Okay, it's five o'clock, we're gonna call the meeting in order. And the first item is approval of the agenda, if you have it in front of you on the computer.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
No changes needed right now.
Okay, we've got a motion to second, all in favor say aye. The agenda, approval of board minutes, and I'm sure you've looked over them because there are several, several steps. Last month was a busy one. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I need to abstain from the meeting, 'cause I was abstained, I cannot.
And Lisa, she's got.
She got it.
Need approval?
Okay, got a motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we have the meetings.
Let your mind off the ones.
Lot of them. And that carries me to a motion for closed session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A1 to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115C-321, and in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the board, which privilege is hereby acknowledged.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion to second, go into closed session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're now back in open session, and the first item up is to approve the personnel agenda, which was just discussed.
Move and approve.
With...
Are you gonna do a separate issue?
No.
You don't want to say no.
Okay. As discussed, and did I hear a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, did I hear a second? Okay, what have I heard?
I made a motion to accept it.
Okay. Is anybody gonna second his motion?
Don't let it die.
There's a lot of people on... Let's pull that, okay, let's back... Can you pull that back out for a second? And will it...
Yeah!
What is that number?
Six A.
Six A, we're going to approve... We're now looking for a motion to approve the personnel agenda with minus six A, which we'll take a separate vote on. Do I hear a motion?
Several of them, Mr. Chair.
Okay, now do I hear a second? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, would like to hear a motion on approval of item six A. Do I hear a motion? I'm gonna give you three chances, do I hear a motion? And I guess I don't hear a motion. Okay, item feels for lack of an... Motion fast. All right, moving on to 5.2, and that would be Ms. Lilly for an alternative accountability model, whatever, and I'm sure she's here, explain to us what that is.
This is the accountability model for EdTech that we use every year. It has to be approved in order for us to send it to Department of Public Instruction. In the past, we have used option C for Alternative Schools Progress Model, and the first year that they were involved in this program, they were at a maintaining level. The second year, they went declining, and this third year will be out on September 7th. But we feel like they have progressed as well, so we're looking forward to seeing that on September 2nd... 7th, sorry, if that's the case. The progress model is persistence, 20% persistence, 20% school achievement, and 60% growth. And this would be going into the fourth year, if this is approved, for option C.
Got you.
Move and approve.
Did I hear a second? Okay, anyone have any questions of Ms. Lilly? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
That was quick. That was almost too quick. Next item up is Mark Dawn, I believe he's gonna explain to us something about beginning teacher support plans.
Yes, this is our annual request to approve Beginning Teacher Support Plan. Every year, the State Board of Education, one of the things that each school system is required to do is get the board to approve how we work with our beginning teachers. Our Beginning Teacher Support Plan follows the State Board policy in terms of who's required to participate, which teachers don't participate, how Beginning Teachers are observed, what their professional development plan looks like, how we work with them for our Beginning Teacher induction, the mentor assignments, how we choose the mentors, and then how we overall take an evaluation of Beginning Teacher Support Program at the end of the year. This year, the only major change in the past, the General Assembly had changed the rules for mentors, and tied being a mentor to your evaluation and your test scores. That policy has actually been relaxed to allow... To no longer tie it to student test scores and to allow more leniency in the evaluation. You still have to be proficient or better, but at one point, it'd been all accomplished or nothing, which is a high rating for a lot of people, any teacher across the state to receive. So that actually helped us, and helped all school systems. So just ask that the board approve this plan.
Any questions? Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, any questions for Mark on this? If not, all in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, you're still up.
That's right.
Disposal of surplus property.
That's right.
I think I can tell you, I dispose of already talked about.
There are two parts to this. The local government property transactions rule requests that if you want to get rid of surplus property, which these cars and trucks would certainly fall under the category of surplus property, that the local Board of Education has to approve... There are different methods that you can approve. The easiest method that we believe and would ask your approval is that instead of approving each one as sold, that you would approve them... You approve of the procedure, where we would try to get fair market value for all property sold, and have one official charge with disposing the property, which we would keep a record and keep an account of how that worked. The vehicles in question, I asked our Director of Transportation to provide. You can see that there's a list of each vehicle, the Kelley Blue Book value, and then our asking price based on certain defects, mileage, et cetera. And if the board approves this, then basically, we would sell these vehicles, try to get as close to the asking price as possible, knowing that we may not always get there. And that would be the procedure, instead of coming back to you at one at a time and saying, "This is the offer we have, are you okay with this offer?"
We're not gonna... We're not gonna be spending money to try to advertise this.
I believe we will be parking these vehicles in front of the transportation building with a for sale sign.
A yard sale kind of...
What about the used to go deals?
We can also list them on there, which is generally on auction site, that we have to do for county property. State property's a little bit different, as long as we're getting the fair market value and showing them.
You could actually make... Probably make a little money this way.
You could.
Yeah, 'cause you don't give the percentage, just to go deals.
You're making a good start here.
I'm trying to clear my mouth.
I was just looking at some of the age and mileage on it, so... Okay, I have no problem with that, so what's the board's pleasure?
Move and approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, got a motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's move on.
Thank you very much.
Mark gonna sit out there in the chair and umbrella.
Get you a table and a yard sale sign.
You gonna have that floppy man going up in there?
Whatever it takes to get rid of that guy.
There's always the vote for yard sale online.
That's right.
That's also free. It's free advertising, we'll take it.
Him and Jerry's gonna take turns out there.
Yeah, I can tell you that happens. Calendars, must be something updated or whatever?
We had the one day missed last week for weather, and what I'd like to ask is that we can replace that day on our calendar for both the early college and the traditional school calendar. The 13th of October is an optional work day, we would move that to last week and move the day that we missed to the optional work day. We feel like we need to hold on to our hours and not run through anything until we get a better idea of what the winter's gonna look like.
Don't we have a couple of half-days in there?
We have some early release days, but you can't pick up enough hours for that, and they're gonna use those for professional development.
And staff is already paid for those days?
That's the other issue, where your staff that wouldn't get a paycheck if we don't do this.
Oh. The gray days that are marked as, I guess, professional development?
Early release days.
Are they teacher work days, or...?
The gray ones are early release days, generally two hours early.
Okay.
And the green ones are your optional teacher work day, and the reason that's optional, a teacher who's accumulated leave is able to use them on those days if they wish, as opposed to being a required teacher work day.
I guess if I scroll down and look at legend, I'll see that.
So if we go all day on Thursday, September 14th, and all day on Thursday, October 5th, we wouldn't pick up enough hours to make a difference?
You'd pick up four hours.
And how many do you have to go if you went half a day to...
You generally get about six and a half in full day.
Yeah, we had about four days.
The other issues with those two early release days, they've already got professional development scheduled, so we'd have to reschedule professional development at some other point.
I don't know if you got a lot of options, but I was just gonna ask...
The other issue, though, is that if we don't make that day up, you've got hourly employees that aren't gonna get paid for that day.
Right. Is there a conflict with that school or anything on that day, the 13th?
Yeah, that was the one that the principal asked us about last week.
Eastern. Yes, at Eastern.
Anyway.
So what do we do?
What was the conflict, I was not aware.
They had their school-wide event on that Thursday night, and they scheduled that because they knew there would not be school on Friday, so now they're... And they've already got all their flyers and everything printed, but now they'll have to change it.
Probably have.
They'll have to change it, well, I think they'll have to make a decision on what they're... If they're gonna change it or end it early, they can't start it early because...
There was nothing in November.
Yeah, I don't see we have a lot of options.
To do it, and we better make it up before December, 'cause then we'll be getting into weather-related issues again.
It doesn't have to be a full day, we have it scheduled as a full day, but at the end of the... End of the year, we have to have 185 instructional days or 1,025 hours, and we've not been in school for 10 days yet, and I just hate the idea of burning up hours right now. We may need them later on.
Why is October 31st got a line through it?
I think it's the end of a grading period.
I was trying to... Okay, I see a line through it, it's just not in gray.
Or would that help that school out on the 13th, have a half a day?
Probably not anymore in the morning.
That's what I said, they gotta give it...
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, they gotta come in the morning, that's too much to worry about.
That's right.
Right, okay, sorry.
What's the board's pleasure?
Move and approve.
Second.
Any last ideas of anybody's? Okay, all in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? Whatever you wanna do about this, not gonna be happy with us.
No.
Okay, there's a send no action, and you're now up. And this ought to be very short, 'cause I've already looked over your file and there's not much on here. Not much to worry about.
Not much to worry.
I'm gonna open up the 16, 17 first, I'll just go in that order.
Yep.
And I think the only one to talk about's the first one, and you've already told us the door's ordered.
The door's ordered, and they're gonna put a temporary door up tomorrow. We had a slab in stock, and they cut the hinge plates this afternoon, and they're gonna put that fire-rated door in. It doesn't match the existing door, but we'll have a door in place tomorrow.
And you've had the frame up for...
The frame's been up since the first week the teachers came back, it was up that Tuesday. Any questions about the 16, 17?
Everything else except for a few of the little alarm stuff is done.
Completed, yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions for Stan, there's nothing left. Okay, I'll open the next one up. You can go through it.
And it's basically just giving you an update of what we had on it. Two south-side compressors and a northeast compressor are in and running, oh, that's not working.
And if I can interrupt for a second. If you look at item 13, 'cause Stan said we've already done those compressor replacements, really, items with a blank line at 13, everything above that are projects that we've got funding from the commissioners to do. Everything else below that's contingent on that loan going through, so obviously, those have been put on hold until we have that. So really, from item row four down to row 12 is what we really have to work with right now, so we're working on those.
Correct.
That's the entire list for right now.
We'll have two RFPs out tomorrow, I think Lisa'll get the other one out, and then I will have the other ones to her by the end of this week, where they can go out, so that'll just about complete our capital projects.
I know we've already talked about it, but 11 and... Excuse me. Yeah, 11 and 12, the... We've got the budget and then the quote, what does that mean? Does that mean there's...
That was budget from the canopy we did away with, last meeting from Eastern Elementary, and y'all approved GW Walker to do two awnings, Mr. Randy's still working on that.
Okay, 'cause that's what I was wondering.
He actually submitted a thing to me Friday, and then we had some questions about one awning, Dr. Phillips and I talked about it, and I went back and met up with him today, and he's gonna work on getting that together.
I mean, I guess my question was, is the money enough to cover it? If not, where would it be?
Well, the first thing he gave us it was, it was just under it, so he was doing a little revision to make it fit the sidewalk, and he's working with the engineer to make sure it won't snow load, and I'll have it next time.
Well, everything else, his RFPs are waiting for us.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Yep. Any questions for Stan on anything else?
Is she good, explained everything?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll keep it up to date.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm just trying to think something to ask you. I ain't let you out that easy, I gotta come up with some kind of question or something. What...
What's the deal with the rest of the year?
If they've financed my other products, I'll have some more to do.
As I said, regular maintenance ought to be called up really good in the schools.
We've hit that budget hard too, so...
Stan, I do have a question. Our custodial staffs throughout our school systems, do... Are they... Are they having any difficulties, or are all them... Is all the equipment working, or the floor...
Yes, ma'am, we've had some issues, we've spent some money on some equipment, we bought some new equipment, we've ordered a carpet cleaner, we've ordered some things, I got some vacuum cleaners coming. We do have some aged equipment, so we're buying out the maintenance department right now, 'cause there was nothing funded, so we're buying it out the maintenance fund.
Yeah, I was gonna say, some of that got cut, that was what got cut.
It got cut, but I gotta keep replacing equipment, they use that stuff every day, and they had old equipment when I came here, and some of them still have old equipment, but something as simple as a vacuum cleaner and the HEPA requirements now, and the kids that are so sensitive, we need the vacuums with HEPA filters in them, and so we'll stir that dust.
I have a lot of people that ask me, and I already know the answer, but just publicly, who do the custodians of each school, who do they answer to, the principal or that school?
Directly to the principal, yes, ma'am. I make sure they get their education and the supplies and things that they need, I look over that side of it, they direct report to the principal daily.
Okay, thank you.
Any issues with the custodial supplies? I know we had some issues with that contract.
We've worked through them, we still have a couple of issues with a couple of materials that are not up, and they're trying some other products, but all in all, yes, they've improved.
Is this gentleman out of Lumberton?
No, this is...
Chapel Hill?
Chapel Hill, Hillsborough area, yes.
He used to be up top of the line, but whatever.
Well, we just had some delivery issues, we were short of some toilet paper, some other things at the end of last year, and they've set their supplies up, and they were cutting us too close, and we had to go borrow stuff from one school. We had the stuff here, but we had to pull from one school to supply another school, and so we've worked with them, we give them a closet they can put some supplies in, Dr. Phillips approved that, I give them a closet at EdTech that they can put some supplies in to have in case we get short. Right there the last week, we were short some wax, but they brought it in overnight, and they went and borrowed some from another client or whatever, but they got the materials here, told them what we had to have to finish up, so...
I know, we also switched waste companies' contract?
Yes, sir.
That working out?
Since we've got the John Cotton Taylor in Eastern Corript into three dumps a week, it's worked great.
They were laying...
They just generate so much trash with those juice and those kids, but it's absolutely had not had a call in months, so...
Good enough?
Good enough. They've been on it.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Yes, sir. Y'all.
Okay, now we're back to Willie McCarroll, who wants to just give us a one-minute update on the local current spending budget.
No pressure.
I know he wants to, so...
We're in the process, we've got nine employees vacancies still outstanding that we're gonna be filling within the local budget. Hopefully, within the next three to four weeks, we will have everything plugged in and all the dollars spread. We're looking at doing multiple-year averages to try to true up, to get the expenditures where we need to help for operations. We may, right now, we're looking at about $240,000, $250,000 shortfall. Part of that has to do with asking for fundings to cover class size reductions, even though Mark and Greg worked their magic trying to utilize federal dollars to meet those state requirements for classroom teachers, we're still gonna fall short, and we'll have to pick those up in local.
Okay. Any questions? If not, thank you very much. Okay. Mark, I believe now would like to give us a FEMA update?
Yes, sir, you may remember Hurricane Matthew back in October of last year?
Yes.
So we have been submitting paperwork to FEMA on and off since that time to get reimbursement for certain things. There were two separate issues. One was there was a classroom at Northside High School that, based on the way the classroom was situated and the land surrounding it, the water pooled up against the window and then kind of leaked in and damaged some of the tile, and we used our in-house excavator and maintenance department to level off the ground to make sure it doesn't happen again. So FEMA's reimbursed us for the use of that excavator and the man-hours, they've also given us the money to now bid out the tile replacement job, so it would not be a capital project, because it's not coming out of capital funds, it's coming out of FEMA funds, but we'll follow the same procedure. We'll post it up for bid like we normally do any other project, but we'll have FEMA money to pay to replace the tile. Of course, we'll have to find somebody to do the work. Now, school's back in session, weekends are over holiday, but we will be able to fix the tile within the classroom. So that's one, that amounted to a combined check for $5,000 that we'll be receiving. The second check for $8,024.70 covers fuel expenses, overtime issues for those employees who work in shelters, both custodians and child nutrition folks that we paid out, and other funds that were related to anybody in overtime or maintenance debris removal, for example, anything that was above and beyond our contract with the company that mows the yards and things like that, does landscaping. So we'll also be receiving that, they'll go back to the general fund, money we expended during the hurricane.
Good to know.
So, and we'll be done with FEMA at that point.
Got any questions?
Have we ever got our money from the county, the shelter?
From reimbursing the shelter.
I just knew somebody was gonna ask that, and I probably could answer, but I'm gonna let somebody else.
Put it on your best of things to do.
I'm gonna let somebody else answer that.
I've not worked with the county any, I've been working with FEMA.
But he... I think he knows which storm I'm talking about, you know?
You know about Pre-Mathew?
No. No, it's Mother Back.
It's about...
I think it's Irene.
It was an ice storm.
Might be getting a little ice storm.
It's like twenty-some thousand dollars.
It was an extended period.
You want me to forget it, don't you?
No, I don't. I... Look, I want the money, but that's a but, question, so...
It don't hurt to ask again.
I think we need to build that as a line item in moving forward, and then if we don't use it, we just carry it over.
I think you're right on.
There you go, that's a good way to handle that. Okay, Mark, don't go anywhere, I see you're up to tell us about a teacher assistant and teacher pilot program.
During the 16, 17 school year, there were handful of school districts that were awarded by the General Assembly grants to give up to five teacher assistant scholarships of $4,500 per academic year over four years, to have teacher assistants that met certain requirements, I've listed them here, that if they met those requirements, then they could, and the school system would enter into a memo of understanding with certain... Wherever the teacher assistant went to school, as long as an in-state school, that they would be refunded tuition and given opportunity to go, as long as they went back to school, of course, to be a teacher. For the 17, 18 school year, Bover County was added to this pilot program, so this'll be our first year. So what we've come up with is a procedure for interested teacher assistants, I've already sent an email out to all of our staff to ask to kind of get a hand to the idea of interested folks. Certainly, priority would definitely go to those folks who are already enrolled in a program, because they're that much further along. Now, this is... It says $4,500 for five TAs for... Per academic year for four years, but this is a year-by-year, so we can only promise we have the money right now for this school year. The General Assembly would have to reauthorize this again and again, even though it says up to four years, it's only a one-year money deal. So we have created an application process for folks to complete that are interested. One of the things... One of the hurdles that I see, a lot of our teacher assistants go back to school online, if they do that, that online has to be in-state, and a lot of our folks tend to get the out-of-state online programs, the only way to receive this is if you're doing it in-state. So... But we have an application process, and then a way of choosing those finalists that may or may not include interviews, if we have to get down to that. Hopefully, we'll be awarding those for some... And again, priority to those folks who are in the pipeline, who are also already in school, so hopefully, we increase the number of teachers.
Okay.
Just wanna make your aware of that.
I mean, basically, that's what you're doing, is just giving us a FYI.
Yes, sir.
You don't need... I know it's not actual, but you won't even be bringing it back.
Sure.
Okay, well, you're still up. Voluntary transfer policy.
So the board had asked Dr. Phillips and myself to speak to this, policy 7440, assignments, reassignments, and transfers, and the policy is not clear about a deadline, 'cause we had talked about a deadline. The way the policy is written, in theory, an employee who wanted to voluntarily transfer would have to submit in writing no later than June 30th that they wanted a transfer request, the school, the position's solved, and their qualifications, and then it says the superintendent would then establish any other procedures. But saying that I want to transfer doesn't mean that there's a specific job available by June 30th, it just means I'm interested in a transfer. In the three years I've been in Bover County Schools, what I can tell you is that our folks are not going to put their names on a list unless they know there's a definite job.
Right.
They just aren't gonna say, "I'm looking for a job, I'll wait for it to open up, but until then, just know I'm looking." That's not gonna happen.
I don't think so.
So that... The policy also doesn't have a deadline, it just says you have to have your name on the list by June 30th, it doesn't say... It doesn't matter what time the job comes open, so it doesn't really match the issue that we were facing. And then it follows up with transfer requests will not be honored during the school year unless approved by both-site administrators and superintendent, so it kind of gives you an out, even if you go beyond the date that you would've signed up for this mythical list, because if both principals agree and superintendent agrees, you can still then go forward. I've spoken with our principals at length, the feedback that I've received honestly is while one principal may be the loser in a certain year, the vast majority do not want a date. I wouldn't say the vast majority, I would say everyone I've spoken to, unless they're just hiding that fact, that they don't want a date to say... Because you're entering into this, so if we say that I have to find a job if I want to transfer by June 30th, for example, just pick a date at random, I live in the Snowden area, and a job comes open, but I've been traveling up to Chalkawinity, I could finally stay in Snowden, but that job comes open August 1st, and I've missed the deadline, it may not come open again.
Right.
And so, at the same time, on the flip side, you know, if I'm the kids at that school, And so, at the same time, on the flip side, you know, if I'm the kids at that school, I'm happy that I haven't lost my teacher, and the principal's happy I haven't lost my teacher. But, so you're kind of balancing the employee desire to transfer versus trying to fill that position. So, at this point, our procedure is that if, if I'm going to apply for a transfer that's a lateral move, teacher to teacher, or whatever the case may be, it's not a promotion, then I, if I secure an interview, I go to my current principal and I let them know. But we have basically said, as long as the school hasn't started, then even if we're all the way into August, which does put our principals in a bind sometimes, we've allowed them to transfer. During the year, that has been less prevalent in the three years that I've been here. I can think of only really one, because we're able to find a quick replacement. Otherwise, what we've said is it's the middle of the year, we just have not allowed that to happen. And, and that's usually the superintendent, that part of the policy that says the superintendent does not approve, even if both administrators have. So, we don't, we're still working with our principals, but we.
Just leave it as is. So, you're basically saying everybody counts, just leave it as it is?
That's the understanding from our, our folks. Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about that? I mean, I'm not going to push it if they don't want it.
No, and I, like, I can see both sides. I mean, I can see, just like you say, one, one principal's winning, the other one's losing. And, you know, you put the shoe in the other foot and, but, anyway, I, I don't know what else you could do.
Well, a good employee is a happy employee.
Exactly. If somebody wants to go somewhere and they don't want to be working for me, then I'd rather them go there anyway.
That's what I always say.
Don't want to be penalized.
And I think for most of ours, it's usually about distance, honestly.
Exactly. And what you said at the beginning, sometimes they may have wanted to go to a neighboring school for years, but there hadn't been an opening in their field, so when one comes